Moving on to item number four, a couple of public hearings. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposal to vacate city-owned property located at 300 South Forest Street. When was the notice published, Mary?
September 12th, 2025.
Any written comments received for or against the proposal to vacate city-owned property located at 300 South Forest Street?
No, sir.
At this time, I'd like to request staff to provide a report.
So for council's consideration tonight is a plat- or not a plat of survey, vacation of a portion of the property directly southwest of City Hall here. As we were preparing a plat of survey to consolidate that block of all the city-owned property within that block, we discovered that there were two remnant parcels or remnant alleys that had not been vacated. Those are shown in the third, on the third page of your packet in hatched areas. There are two small pieces of alleys that probably should have been vacated when the rest of them were vacated and for some, for whatever reason, were not vacated. So we're presenting that as a vacation of those alleyways for council's consideration. We've provided you the option of waiving the second and third reading. If you choose to do that, we would, we would bring the plat of survey to the next council meeting for your consideration. If you choose to see the second and third readings through, we would bring the plat of survey for your consideration alongside that third reading. But we would recommend approval of the vacation of the property, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel? All right, hearing none. Is anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against a proposal to vacate city-owned property located at 300 South Forest Street? Seeing and hearing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
And roll call?
Sir Chet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Item 4A1, I need a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-900 approving the vacation of city-owned property. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call?
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sir Chet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item 4A, optional. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third readings of ordinance Motion and a second?
So moved.
I'll second that.
And roll call?
I don't, yeah, just, I'm trying to think of a reason. This makes me a little bit nervous just because it's city-owned property and given a little time, but I'm trying to think of a scenario that would, you know, allow more daylight on this and come up with something, and I don't have anything, so.
It's city-owned property, and it's staying city-owned property, and...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We need roll call, please.
Otis?
Yes.
Sir Chet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Moving on to public hearing 4B, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the sump pump collector project. When was the notice published, Mary?
September 12th, 2025.
Have we had any written comments for or against the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the sump pump collector project?
We have not.
At this time, I'd like to request staff to provide a report.
So on September 10th, 2025, we held a bid letting for the sump pump collector project here in Polk City. That bid letting produced one bidder. The apparent low bidder was On Track Construction out of Nevada, Iowa. Their apparent low bid for the base bid was $389,088. The engineer's ref, or estimate was $290,120. We believe that the bids come because this is a unique project. As we were doing research through this project, we found that most municipalities will publicly bid one sump pump collector project, and then they bring them in-house. I would guess it's probably because they have similar results to this for bid lettings. After discussion with city staff, we feel that this is a good opportunity for us to get the sump pump collector project and program underway, on track. We've had success with them in the past dealing with some very unique situations. I've told Chelsea this, but I met the owner of On Track Construction standing over a sanitary sewer service in the middle of February on Sixth Avenue. So we've run into some unique things, some existing facilities that we've had to retrofit, that kind of stuff. So I think On Track would be very, very capable and very, very well-equipped to handle this work. Also, after discussion with city, city staff, we will approach On Track and see if there's anything in which we can trim the cost of the project down after we're under contract with them, but it's very dangerous to negotiate with somebody before you're under contract. So tonight, we're recommending acceptance award and approval of the contract for the base bid to On Track Construction in Nevada, Iowa. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, so when you mentioned most municipalities that bid this out and then bring it in-house, what, why are we not bringing it in-house?
Because we wanted to give it a shot, and we were, we're doing a much larger project than most of those municipalities do, so we were taking a big swing at these sump pumps, addressing some of your major problem areas. And also, we had concerns about specific areas we were in, the amount of utilities and those things. Public Works wasn't real comfortable with doing those, because the uniqueness of this is you guys have a lot of utilities in your right-of-ways in the original part of town. Whereas the communities that I polled specifically, Huxley, a lot of their utilities are overhead, so they can much more easily bring it into their Public Works Department and not have to worry about all the underground utilities that you guys have in your right-of-ways. So I think in our, from our perspective, the additional cost is an insurance policy because you guys wouldn't be responsible for any utility damage that would happen should something get struck during construction.
It's an expensive insurance policy, $100,000.
I would, I, I would tell you, you hit one ser, one utility service and you're into it for 10 or 15 grand.
Anything else from counsel? Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the sump pump collector project? Hearing none, I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting. Motion, second?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Otis?
Yes.
Sir Chet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Item 4B1 then, I need a motion to approve the resolution adopting plans for the sump pump collector project.
So question before that, could we maybe ha, we don't have Public Works here tonight, how feasible is it even for his team to, to do this? I guess is that, how far did, in discussions did, did we get on bringing this in-house?
So, we didn't think this project was a good project for Public Works to do, but we would consider future projects that are smaller in scale is what we talked about with Public Works team. So this is a pretty big, significant project that they weren't comfortable constructing.
Okay, is, is there, if, so if we were doing less of these, and I guess the alternate, in my opinion, could be, we've been talking about this for a while, and I know that having, again, lived in that neighborhood, there's probably a good amount of people that are excited about it, but there's also no urgent need, and since we're not borrowing money, going $100,000 over the estimate on a CIP item like this, does maybe warrant that look? I, I get that we're in late September and, you know, timing this time of year for, for work that you're digging on. This may be a little problematic, but is it worth revisiting a, a sort of a staged approach in-house to, to do this? I don't, I guess I'm looking at my...
Probably not in-house. We, we did talk about rejecting all bids and rebidding again in the springtime. You take the chance that you get higher bids, you get no bids, and we really felt like we had an opportunity here to get this project underway, hopefully before the winter, which is when most of the problems happen. You are not approving work to be done on Roosevelt tonight, that was a bid alternate.
Correct.
That was split into two separate bid alternates.
Yep, the base bid is Lyndale, Sunset, and Oakland.
That could be something we further just have discussion on, is talking about splitting Roosevelt up and seeing if that's something that we could do internally in-house. But I think that's just the risk you're taking. It's, you know, it's unfortunate, we received one bid, it's not as competitive had we received multiple bids, but I think we are concerned that if we were to rebid the project, we may get worse results.
And, and the benefit of having a contractor do it versus Public Works is we, so right now, we have no impacts to sidewalks, no impacts to driveways. They're going to install those items trenchless, and I don't know Public Works' capability, but chances are, you'd either have to take out driveways and sidewalks for Public Works to do it, or they'd have to hire a boring company where you're probably, I mean, you're, you may nullify your cost at that point if somebody's specifically coming out to run a bore rig. So I think there's a lot of uncertainty in the approach.
I get it, but I, I think, you know, with this being as different a cost opinion as it is, one of two things need to happen. Either we go ahead and adjust other items, or we revisit the plan. So I'm, I don't know where I'm at, but I, I mean, continuing to, it's one thing, sad as it is to say, when, when we get favorable bids or, or just bids different and it's borrowed money, that's a contained decision. This is a series of decisions affecting our CIP, and I think taking a hit to, to this level warrants additional planning.
Okay.
Are we aware of any other company that does this kind of work?
So we, we sent multiple notices to multiple companies that we thought would be interested in the work. I, I do think some of it is, is you have a lot of underground utilities in those corridors. And I don't, that's part of the reason that we didn't advocate for rejecting all bids is I, I don't know that there's going to be a whole lot of condition change that's going to make it better. What I will say is this is the first bid that we've gotten on CIP projects in the last two or three years that has come in over. Again, I, I think, I think it's, it's not apples to apples, but I do think sometimes you just get in, into a situation where a project isn't maybe as desirable as you would hope it would be, and contractors get to be picky and choosy with whether or not they propose. So I think On Track would do a really nice job, and I think, I think it would be a ni, a, a good start to your program.
And just to piggyback off of what Travis said earlier, we would work with the contractor to possibly do some value engineering once we enter into contract, so we would make every effort that we could, just making sure that we try to reduce the, the project cost if we were able to do that. So just for you all, this is a budgeted project. The, the bid is over the city's budget. We do anticipate having some additional storm sewer funds to offset the additional cost of the project, as well as utilize some road use funds for the additional expenses.
Anything else from counsel? Let's go ahead and vote then. Item 4B1, I need a motion to approve the resolution adopting plans for, actually, first, I need to ask if we, let's see, we have to have a motion, don't we, to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting, Larry?
Reopen.
We already did, okay. So we are on 4B1?
Yes, sir.
Got my mark in the wrong place. I need a motion then to approve the resolution adopting plans for the sump pump collector project. A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sir Chet?
Yes.
Moving on then to item 4B2, I need a motion to approve the resolution awarding the contract for the sump pump collector project. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sir Chet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
All right then, let's move on to a public comment time. This is the time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. Did we receive any cards, Mary?
We did not.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Hearing none then, we'll move on to item number six, consent items. I need a motion and a second to approve our consent items.
I will make a motion but ask to pull item N.
All right, so we will go ahead and have a motion and a second to approve all consent items other than item N, and then we'll talk about N.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Who seconded?
Otis?
Yes.
Sir Chet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
All right then, let's talk about item number N.
So I did not pull this to reject it, although I maybe would like to. I, I'm just gonna put, we've had discussions previously about recognition for volunteers, and I, I think that needs to be something we put a little bit more effort into, and I would like to do it here for Krista. I, you know, I, I can't do it myself in, in, because I will miss something, but she, she references 56 years in Polk City. I know she's been on, the, the language here is funny to me, and, and Krista fashion, my termination on Polk City P&amp;Z is, is humorous, but 15 years on P&amp;Z, and, and like I said, I'm not going to name all the other organizations because I will miss more of them than I will be able to cite because of all the ones that are out there, and some of them go back, I'm not a young person, but they go back longer than I do. So it's, it's, I just, I think we can do more to acknowledge it so we can pass this and, and allow her, I don't know what that is, I don't want to be too prescriptive if other people have thoughts, but recognizing her a little bit more thoroughly and, and if you saw the meeting, went through the whole meeting, said she was leaving town, and immediately thanked the people that she was serving with and, and cited them for what she had learned and didn't really point the finger at herself in any way. So I would like for us to do that.
I don't think there'd be any argument from anybody to, to do something like that. Why don't we go ahead and make a motion to approve and get a second and vote on N, and then I think it's a given that I think the entire council would be happy to do that, Rob?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sir Chet?
Yes.
Item number seven then, business items. First reading of ordinance 2025-1000, architectural design standards. Travis?
So I'm going to apologize in advance, there's a lot here. For council's consideration tonight is an amendment to chapter 159, or 157 of Polk City Code. This has been a, an amendment that's been coming, and we've been in the works with this on planning and zoning since June, really before that. There's been several projects this year that have kind of triggered some consideration of some of these items, but we really started talking about it in June. We then revisited it during the September meeting. At that time, we had, we had presented a marked-up version of the ordinance to P&amp;Z. We went through that whole, all the modifications, P&amp;Z tweaked some language, and then the, the finalized ordinances for your consideration tonight. I've put together a memo basically outlining all the changes that we made. The big theme here is we're trying to promote permanency and durability in our architectural materials in the commercial and residential, or commercial, residential, and industrial districts. So we've added some language to clarify the durability and permanence. P&amp;Z would like us to, or would like to see a 15-year warranty on all commercial and industrial materials, whether that be via warranty, a design life, something like that. We've strengthened some of the language to make it clear that we're pushing people towards those more desirable materials. We've added places where we specifically call out that the code encourages architectural standards to meet those of the surrounding existing areas so that we don't have developments that are incompatible with the neighborhood that they're in. We've actually made a major change in terms of materials, where we used to have acceptable materials, acceptable materials where brick is required and unacceptable. We've created a class system which kind of mirrors a lot of the codes that we have in the Des Moines Metro, with Class A being your brick and stone, Class B being acceptable alternatives to brick and stone, which we'll touch on a little bit later, C being non-brick materials that are acceptable, and D being unacceptable. It kind of cleans up some of the language, it allows us a little more flexibility in some of those things, and then it allows us to add materials to those classifications without having to completely deconstruct all the other classifications and mess with those. So that's one of the reasons that we did that, and it's also going to be more consistent with the things you see around the metro, which I think will help developers kind of marry up our code with other codes across, across the metro area. In doing that, we made reference to anywhere it was brick and stone, it's now Class A materials, just to kind of clean that up. And then one of the big ones is we are adding architectural standards to M districts. As we researched throughout the metro, basically what we saw is that commercial standards are here, and, and M standards are here. You know, your commercial is higher than your industrial, the actual proportions kind of varied across the metro, but what I would say is what we're proposing here and what you have in your commercial, where it's 60-facing right-of-way, 50 on all other sides, and now what we're proposing with the 40-facing right-of-way, 30 all other sides, that pretty much splits the difference of what we saw across the metro. There are some communities that are up in the 70s and 80s in terms of what they require for brick and stone, there are some that get as low as 20 to 15. So that kind of splits the difference. I think we've landed right where we want to be. Basically, the terminology that P&amp;Z has used is we want to be on the high end of average when we come to the standards that we hold Polk City developments to. So that's part of this ordinance update. Something that we're kind of giving back on a little bit is having some flexibility in our brick and stone requirements. So with the introduction of a Class B material, basically what we're saying is in any district where a Class A material is required, up to 30% of that requirement can be made up of Class B materials. Right now, a Class B material is an architectural steel panel that mimics stone and brick, but as we continue to grow in the ordinance, we'll have the opportunity to add other acceptable Class B materials. So basically, in a commercial structure with a side that faces the right-of-way, no more than 20%-ish of that building would be that Class B material because of the 60% requirement. That kind of gives you an idea. So we're giving a little bit back and giving some flexibility on our stone and brick while introducing those M1, or those M district requirements. We added a lot of clarification in terms of our materials, so we added the architectural concrete panels. We specifically allow both pre-cast and cast-in-place. There's some ambiguity there that we've wrestled with in the past. Textured concrete block was defined as being a simulation of brick and stone, so we don't want anything that could be construed as a CMU or some other block and mortar type situation. We some, want something that's going to simulate that brick and stone because that's part of the Class A materials. We split architectural cla, or steel panels to be between Class B and Class C. Already talked about the Class B materials being embossed to simulate the brick and stone look, with C being an acceptable material, but it has, we put specific requirements where Class C materials can't have vertical seams, they have to have concealed fasteners, and no dimension on the panel can be less than 24 inches. Basically, we want that thing to look like it's a panel and not siding, because then we get, start towing our way towards that vertical steel siding, which really was the crux of, we had a discussion item on a P&amp;Z agenda where there was a question of what does that code requirement mean that really prompt this modification? And then we beefed up the prohibited vertical steel siding description to be siding that has corrugated or ribbed surfaces, exposed fasteners or panels less than 24 inches, kind of clarify those items, make it a little less interpretation, more cut and dry in terms of when staff's administering the code. We've added some requirements in terms of garages for multifamily structures that the garages should, would specifically match the primary structure. That was kind of ambiguous, it was implied in the code before, but we're being very explicit in telling people that if the garage structure has multiple garage stalls in it, no more than four can be at a single elevation from the adjacent traveled way, with the idea being is that we don't want this long, monotonous building, we want some variability, and that was something that P&amp;Z really, really wanted. And then the other thing that we did was adding some specifications as we start moving into areas where you guys have multifamily or high-density residential developments potentially coming, where townhomes and row homes, we've added a specification where no more than one-third of a building's frontage can be at a single elevation from the adjacent traveled way, and then that same building should have some sort of visual interest item, so an opening, a recess or protrusion, plantings, a column, something to give that breakup of the building at no more than one-sixth. And then we did something similar with the, the apartments, where instead of one-third, we'll do one-fifth for apartment buildings, and no more than one-tenth should have, and then basically an uninterrupted expansive wall without visual interest. And then the final modification we made is in 157.09-6, adequate treatment was the terminology that was used for screening loading docks, HVAC systems, basically negative impact things that can be seen from the right-of-way. So we beefed that language up to be opaque screening at maturity, and then we defined how that would be measured. So basically, at the adjacent right-of-way line or a shared property line, you would met, basically simulate a six-foot height, and then it needs to screen from that height. So the idea was, and one of the items that came up at P&amp;Z was like Lakeside Fellowship Church, their HVAC systems on the backside of the building, front to Edgewater, and Edgewater sits up above that structure, so they put in an eight-foot fence instead of the standard six-foot because of the eye-level difference in the screening requirement that we had. So just kind of clarifying that. A lot of these items, I think, probably end up in a situation where we're not making huge changes of the code. A lot of it's interpretation, a lot of it's making it a little more cut and dry in terms of administration of the code, with really the only major change that we're making in terms of requiring something new that isn't typical for these types of buildings is the M1 or the M districts, but even those, we saw across the metro, most communities have some sort of architectural standard and brick requirement for those industrial facilities. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, delve into any specifics. I know I buzzed through that real quick. Hopefully, my memo will help summarize that and get you up to speed on that, but if you'd like to discuss anything in particular, I'd be more than happy to talk through that with you.
Counsel?
No questions, I agree with the higher side of average approach. There's a very fine and somewhat ambiguous line between having high standards and prohibiting or stifling development, and this probably helps us with that. Really appreciate the time. I know these discussions aren't always the most exciting or glamorous, but P&amp;Z and, and you and Snyder Resources put in a lot of work, so good upgrade here, appreciate the, the changes.
Thank you, Travis.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then we need a motion and a second to approve first reading of ordinance 2025-1000 architectural design standards.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call?
Otis?
Yes.
Sir Chet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Moving on to item number eight, reports in particulars, anything from staff? Okay, anything from Chelsea?
I would just like to thank Krista Bowers-Socks for her service to the city of Polk City. Krista is actually one of the first people that I met when I moved to Polk City, and she has represented this community very well for a number of years, so thank you and congratulations to Krista. I just wanted to add another item really quickly. Travis, I don't know if you touched on this, but a big thank you to Planning and Zoning for undertaking this architectural standard design. We've been working on this for months and months, and you may have noticed, we've not presented you with anything tonight regarding the town square. That is the next district we will be taking up this winter with Planning and Zoning, so the work will not be done when you get through the three readings of the ordinance on the agenda tonight. We will be working on the town square architectural standards this winter with Planning and Zoning. That's all I've got, thank you.
Counsel? All right, and I guess I don't have anything to add tonight either, so we'll move on to item number nine, which is adjournment. I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We are adjourned until October 13th. Thank you. Is that my pen back from Rob?
Yes.
I caught this one. Kind of protective of my pens.